At this point, I would welcome a motion to approve the agenda. So moved by Commissioner Jason, seconded by Commissioner Pillsbury. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to check one thing first. Okay. Seeing none, I would ask for a vote. All in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we have an agenda. It is this point in the meeting of the Burlington School District that we welcome public comment. This is time for the public to weigh in on any matter which they like. It is not a time which the Board will engage in debate, but it could open up further conversations at a later time. And any member of the public of the school district is welcome to make comment at this time. And we had passed around or we had put down a clipboard that did have a sign-up sheet. And Jill, could you just... This will be the time for, as I said, members of the public, and we will go by the list. If there are others who have not signed up who would like to speak at the end, certainly you'll be able to come forward. One other thing I'd like to mention, sort of as public input as well, at the front, there are some paper copies of the version of the budget information request form that we have online, that if people wanted to take a look at that and make some comments and leave them with us this evening, you could also do that. Some of those papers are up toward the front. So, first, as often the case, try to keep your comments to approximately three minutes or less, so that we can have everyone speak, as well as take action on the rest of the agenda. So the first name on the list is Marion Stepke.
Hi, thank you, everybody. I want to thank you all, going back to last season, for all the enormous time and the hours that you've all put in.
Just one second, Marion.
Yep. Is it turned on?
Is that mic not working? No, don't get me covered. I know it's kind of particularly when you can't use it. Will you get that fixed up?
Does this work?
Yes, perfect, thanks.
Okay. So I want to thank you all for the amount of time that you all spent last spring in listening to a large number of parents speak to the Board and the jury's committees regarding not cutting co-curriculars and athletics, the spending for that. And this is, my comments are in response to the request to speak out without going forward, to get involved in the process early. So I just request that you keep that thought in mind going forward, keep that memory of the enormity, the outpouring of the community, and how many people spoke and for how many hours, and there was very, very little overlap in all the things that people said and the passion that came through. So please keep that in your minds and thoughts as you go forward. I want to also just explicitly say, please keep athletics and co-curriculars at least level funded, if not increase it. There has not been an increase to athletic spending since the last millennium. So I would like to ask that that be kept in your thoughts going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. I guess next on the list then is Molly Walsh. There were names between you, but they pulled themselves off the list. Sorry, so you are next.
I wanted to request that the executive session be moved to the front of the meeting rather than the end of the meeting, so the public could be aware of your actions.
I think I will, you know, in a question to change the agenda, I guess what I can say is that we did adopt an agenda, we did have the executive session in place at the end, and the Board did not amend that agenda at this point. I know that, like I said, I know two people had signed up who said they did not need to speak in the end. I don't know if anybody, either who had or had not signed up, at this point would like to speak further. I, there are no other names on the official list right now for speaking. Seeing no more interest, I will close the public comment section of the meeting. And at this point, we are, in fact, I see folks here now, sorry for the confusion, from Partnership for Change, who wanted to present, have approximately 15 minutes to present, from what I understand, you know, an introduction, a little bit of a description of what's going on right now, and a bit of a talk to some of the newer members of the fellowship. So if you all would like to come forward and, you know, however you feel comfortable if it's speaking, standing from, you know, both us and to the public, I would like to...
Yeah, thank you for letting us be here tonight. We are the new fellows for the Partnership for Change this year, and we're really here just to introduce ourselves, let you know a little bit about the work we'll be doing this year, as well as ways for the school board or community to get involved, and how we can be of help to you. So my name is Erica Lowe, and some of you know me as an English teacher here at Burlington High School. I also teach in the ninth grade academy. This year, I continue to be a learning fellow with the Partnership for Change. And there's a couple initiatives that the Community-Based Learning I-Team is focusing on this year. One is, how can we find better ways to support our ELL learners and our low-income students to be college-ready? A second is, how can we expand student and teacher knowledge and practice of design thinking, which is something that was started last year, and many teachers and students became involved with that. And with Community-Based Learning, we also want to look at, how can we create new opportunities so that students are really building relationships with community members, finding relevance to their learning, and learning the rigor?
Hi, my name is Will Andrews. I'm going to be the, or I am, the Youth Engagement Leadership Fellow for this year. I'm a teacher at Menusky. I've taught at Menusky School System for the last nine years. And one of my main questions that I'm focusing on is how we can engage all students in leadership opportunities, community-based action, and really giving students a voice in school and in the community in order to foster more control over their education.
Good evening. I'm Beth Broe, some of you know me as Spanish in the Morning at Evans Middle School. And in the afternoons, I am the Family School Partnership Fellow. This is my 29th year in education in the state of Vermont, and I also served seven years on the school board, so I have sat in your shoes, and I know what that's like. And all I can say is thank you so much for what you give back to the community by being on the school board. In partnership, in the family school partnerships, how likes to say, "Not about us, without us." And I think that our main question for family school partnerships is, how can we improve family school partnerships so that it is everybody's job?
Hi, my name is Amy Gibson, and I'm the Partnership Fellow this year in the area of teaching and learning environments. I haven't been a teacher in either my spirit, but I grew up here at Burlington, and I'm actually, I wrote a PhD. I've just moved back to the area after living in the Boston area for the past 10 years, where I was teaching high school biology and leading the science department at my school down there. And I'm really approaching teaching and learning environments from a number of different areas. Worked in the partnership last year, considered the physical space for learning, considered the time of classes and of the school year, considered groups of teachers and of students in terms of creating learning environments. But I'm interested in all of those even more. I'm really interested in the sort of culture and the mindsets that are established in teaching and learning environments, and thinking about how to create classrooms with the mindset that will really prepare all students with the skills that they need to thrive in this 21st century.
So at this point, I mean, would you...
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, sorry. I'm...
Oh.
We're also here this evening representing the fifth fellow of the partnership, Sarah Bertuzzi, who can be here this evening, she's actually out on medical leave for a couple of months. She is continuing her fellowship from last year, so some of you may be familiar with her work in the area of personalized and proficiency-based learning. She really led the charge last year to help both districts through a really drastic community-based process develop their graduate expectations. And we all are sort of pitching for Sarah for right now in helping teachers at the two schools really figure out what proficiency-based learning looks like in their classrooms.
And many of you already know what the Partnership for Change is, but we'd like to describe it as basically two things. It's an investment in human capital, where we're investing in our teachers and our community members, and really giving them the reins in order to beat this. And also, we want people to be innovated, so we're basically trying to be an innovation dollar change, allowing teachers and students to kind of go out there and study things that they're interested in, and really take that initiative to push their own teaching practice forward.
So a lot of people ask, what exactly do the fellows do? We actually have several roles. Our first role is that we're the lead learners, and whether that is looking at research from afar, or whether it is interviewing and finding out what's going on in our own communities and should encounter best practices, we are researching that and bringing that back here. We are connecting the I-Teams, the school board, the teachers, the community members, and the students, we're connecting all those pieces together, and trying to support people that are trying to, people that are using innovation in their classrooms and in the community. We add support and we're for at least connect them with the support that people need to do now. And finally, we communicate. We let you know what is going on in partnership, what is going on in school systems, and what is going on with all of these innovations.
And finally, we just want to let you know that there's some changes that have happened with the partnership this year. One is, in order to make it more convenient and easier for everyone to be involved, we've had all our I-Teams now on a second Thursday of every month. They used to be in different locations on different nights. Now, all five teams meet on the same night. The only exception is this Thursday, which is the first I-Team meeting at the Newtown High School. Childcare will always be provided, and we'll always have translators on-site, and we do support transportation. So if you know people that would be interested in getting involved, that's one resource. The other is, we wanted to make it a lot easier for teachers to be innovative in their practice this year, so we have two funds for teachers, innovative programs and teacher investment funds, where teachers can apply for grants to test out sustainable practices in these areas. And finally, we just want to let you know that you can use us as a resource. You know, we are out and about everywhere, talking to everyone, connecting everyone, doing research. So if you come across, you know, any constituents or community members that have questions, please look for us as a resource. If you want to get involved, that would be great. I know that I've been on some site visits with Menusky School Board members, and it's just been so rich to be able to have everyone working at the table together. So it's really easy to contact us. It's our first name, partnershipvermont.org, and you can also find us on the Partnership Vermont website. So thank you for giving us some time to talk to you today.
Thank you. We have a couple extra minutes, if you have the possible, if there are a couple of questions. I don't know, any board members might? Liz?
I know, I'm back to my line. I'm just curious about whether you have time or any plans to go to the PTO meetings and kind of give this little presentation.
Yeah, one of the things that we're going to do this first month is we're going to present in every elementary and middle school in the district, which didn't happen last year. And that's why we're here tonight. We presented at the steering committee meeting, so the PTO is just one other place where we could, so that's a great suggestion.
Liz, I'm sorry, Marion.
Do you have a quick question? First is for Erica, and I think that your goal to look at, taking college readiness, more attention to people is great. I noticed that you included that you're looking for kids who are English language learners and kids for low income, and I think another group you might want to look at is kids who are involved in special education and are on classroom programs. And it would be lovely if that could also be wrapped into it, because that group has the same challenges, similar challenges.
Thank you. That's a great suggestion. I know that this is going off the board plan that was created before our first year in the partnership, and one of the things we're trying to do right now in the fall is see, you know, what voices aren't being heard right now, not about us, not about us. And so after our first year, we're doing an assessment right now to figure out what we're missing, so that's a great suggestion, and if you have others, please let us know.
Yeah, go ahead.
My next question is a question, actually. So this question is, you know, I've been hearing a lot about partnership change and the creation of it, and it's wonderful. Well, I guess I'm something of a linear thinker, so I think about how can we get from here to here? And so one of my challenges when I think about the partnership to change is, if someone can tell me, understand, what's the process between an innovative good idea that one of you, for example, comes up with, and seeing it piloted in the classroom? What's the process there? Does it come through the administration?
So I appreciate that question a lot, because I'm also a very linear thinker, and therefore the shift into this job for me is challenging, because a lot of the work of the partnership is not linear. But I guess, so there's not one answer to your question. If one of us has a cool idea, really our first job is to talk it up, and to have, you know, not a huge body of research, but at least a little something to show to teachers, to say, "Look, this has worked in other places," or "Look, this is how other teachers have done this," or "How you might do it." So I know many of us are spending a lot of time, not only at spending time like this, but also meeting with individual teachers to kind of see their thinking, but also to figure out where they're already sort of interested in going. So that's one route, is us sort of harassing teachers. Another route is teachers themselves, if they have an idea, they can contact us, they can apply for funds to get the money to sort of kickstart their idea, but through that, they'll also be connected with us, and we can support them in doing that. And then a third way is that some of these ideas are coming more through the administration. And what I see at both Burlington and Menusky is really nice, and again, it's not very linear, or it's not like, okay, here's where we're going now, do this to get there. But both principals are convening faculty meetings or committees that are saying, "Here are all these ideas, pick one and try it out." And in my experience of working with teachers, that's a much effective way to promote change than to say, "Okay, now we're switching gears, everyone has to do this new system." I don't know if there's any else?
I think from a, being a teacher last year, a teacher's perspective, I know that in the academy, we then had a time for the first time to get together and collaborate and talk about these ideas. So if we had an idea, like the race event that we wanted to come on, we were really listening to our students and what they needed, and so the 20 of us got together and we reached out to the administration. We reached out to the district office, we reached out to the Partnership for help. We knew what we wanted to do. It was quite an endeavor to have 300 kids get involved in a day of, you know, community conversations about race, but with their help, we were able to see it through. Another example is a student last year who really saw how teachers and community members were going on these site visits, but wondered about students, and reached out to a teacher and said, "Hey, I want to organize a trip with students." And so they got in contact with Benjamin Rush, who was the Youth Engagement Fellow at the time, in the Partnership for Change, and then we were able to help them to go to Providence and really look at some schools where a lot of innovation was happening. And out of that, they created a course, where we now have students at Burlington High School, which are helping to work on school transformation and are leaders in our school. So there isn't one linear process, but what's different is, a lot of voices are at the table now. It's not just one person making decisions, our small group. There's so many partners, and the whole philosophy behind that is to create, you know, more bottom as well as sustainability for these systematic changes.
I will say this, we didn't schedule about 15 minutes, which is where we are. Is this something, if you want a couple extra minutes? Let me go with Meredith first, it'd be good.
Yeah, I mean, I wanted to put a question out there, not to necessarily be answered right now, but some to come back to the Board, you know, in some form. Which would be a great question. How would, the follow-up is, how will the partnership's work become institutionalized? What kind of systems are being created? Really, please don't answer that, because I know it's a huge question, but I would be interested in learning more about like that kind of, you know, institutionalizing the implementation.
Good question.
Meredith?
And my question is just about physical space, which Amy referenced, but I know this process really isn't about physical space, but I often wonder, what I want to know is, have you seen other schools that have had these aging schools, and then they've taken innovative programs and had to fit them in? You know, so I'm really interested in that piece as well. So... Would you be interested in joining us, in some way? Our attempt on the school board...
You know, one thing that the Board, we want to, you know, keep making us aware of what we can do, and I think there's, you know, Board committees such as infrastructure and technology that could take input, discussions going on in the communities right now, so just Calendar 2.0, you know, as well as, you know, one thing I heard a lot of feedback from was the guest program, which I knew had input from partnership, you know, just things like that would be good to hear, you know, partnership would have, when they've looked at, say, something like programs that are innovative programs being tried, what works, what doesn't, what moves on, such as...
So I have a question back to you, and I'll be real, is that, would it be, not that we want to inundate anybody's mailbox, but if we have things that come up, if we were to field it through your mailbox, would that be a reason? Have you thought of something that might be good to go out to the Board? You could send it along?
Yeah, and what I would say is, probably, we'll get back to that. We'll take it as a question, and we'll come back.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much, and appreciate the work you're doing as fellows this year. Let me get back to my agenda. At this point, it's the Board report, which I have two items due in the agenda. If other Board members have other things they would like to bring up, this would be the point in time. The first piece I would like to say, discuss is the budget process. I think certainly, I think almost all of, if not all of, the front porch forums were touched by the budget process. NPAs, folks have been attending. I know people have been getting out to school events. We did talk about this a fair amount at the Finance Committee, and there was discussion of reaching out to other areas such as, through family, school, through our liaisons, to reach into the refugee community, as well as reaching into the senior community potentially, into areas where we're not necessarily going to be touching the folks who are most either, you know, online or attached to the schools. I don't know, I would kind of ask too, is there anyone else who wanted to weigh in on anything related to the budget process this evening? Any of the things that they've done, heard, or otherwise?
This actually, I think goes to Jeanie. I was wondering if I could get a list of admin salary over 75K with their job description. I'm trying to get a handle on what people do. And just the title, I'm not getting enough information from them. Is that a possibility?
Certainly.
Thank you. Anything else in the outreach? I, you know, I would also remind committee chairs that, to try to see if there's any engagement within your committee during this month, as we're trying to collect the information between Finance Committee and Planning Committee for, at the end of the month. So then, some initial comments related to the program ideas that are in the questionnaire can be brought to the Board at our meeting next month. Second piece that I would like to address, talk about status of the real estate transactions. We have met a couple times, a couple different groupings, with the folks from UVM, with the major focus being on looking at the details of the lease for Taft. That had been the piece where, as it turned out, the two parties did not have all the details in line, and been working through it over the last month. It was a meeting again today. While my understanding is the tone was positive, we gave back to UVM our understanding of what both parties could agree to, and I guess they just said, you know, "We can't quite answer you on the wire." We are right now trying to re-present the real estate transactions to the city's Finance Committee, who had prior passed it on to the Board, and the Council, the Council would have voted on it when we asked to bring it up. And at this point, we would like to show it back to the Finance Board, goes to the full Board, in part because I think the lease would be a different document than what they had seen prior. So the status there is, we are still working on the lease, and at this point, trying to see if we can get to a Finance Committee meeting, which would be at the end of September and not this upcoming meeting, which I think is on Monday, the 16th. Additionally, I think we've been responding to whatever requests for more information about some of these transactions. I think, you know, I think that there's points there that we're trying to, you know, provide as much information as, you know, is appropriate when it comes to dealing with real estate negotiations, as well as having, you know, other discussions around with, you know, folks in the, you know, folks in the area to, you know, just to make sure that we are basically in shape with, you know, everything that's been presented to us. I did want to make a few comments on Calendar 2.0, but I think what I would, from the Board's side, but I think I'll wait to do that until you've presented some more information in the Superintendent's Report.
Is that my cue?
Well, yeah, unless anybody had anything for me on real estate. Yeah, now move on to the Superintendent's Board.
So I have a number of things to report on tonight. Diversity and Equity update, I'll just kind of briefly, it kind of starts and ends my list. So I'll briefly report that in the Diversity Equity Committee, Partnership Department, we have been working on hiring a Director of Diversity Education and Engagement, and I do have a recommendation for you that here tonight, I'm going to ask Nikki to speak on it in just a minute. We have been working to reconvene our Equity Council, some folks came off, some new folks need to be appointed. Sparks is working on finalizing that list, and I'll be appointing them shortly. And hold the date if you're available, on September 30th, we will be presenting publicly the Brown University results of our ELL program review. So we're in the process of preparing that public presentation. We did recently have a meeting with the Parents for Change group, just kind of a check-in meeting on where we are with promises and commitments that were made. meeting on where we are with promises and commitments that were made last November. We are making progress and I believe, although I had to leave that meeting a few minutes early, I believe it was reported back to me that some type of follow-up event will follow, will occur this fall, later this fall. Kind of an annual check-in, public check-in for the community to know how far Parents for Change in the Burlington School District has come on the commitments that we've made. Partnership for Change update, you heard quite a bit from our presenters tonight. Thank you very much for being here. Just a couple of other brief items. As you heard tonight, the funding structure has been changed to support innovation. This partially addresses Miriam's question. Anyone, you can, anyone can apply for funding for innovative practices in their classroom. And you can see the application process of those who receive the funding on the Partnership for Change website. As of Friday, there were three Burlington High School teachers approved, primarily in the areas of financial literacy, chemistry applications, and a barcoding class, which sounds really fascinating to me. We are going to have an AmeriCorps position to help us be in the position of developing cross-cultural storytelling, so stay tuned for some more information on that this year.
Is that the Vista?
Yes, AmeriCorps Vista, yes. On November second, another save the date, we anticipate holding another community learning conversation similar to last February second. We are inviting the governor, the mayor, the secretary of education, legislators, and all of you on all of the community and teachers. It has, the date is not fully confirmed, but save it now and we'll get back to you very shortly. November second. Upcoming dates as you-
You said it was community learn, or community engagement. Is that in a particular area? Last year it was definitely on graduate expectations?
Right, so it's kind of, it's the next stage of graduate expectations. What does that look like?
Okay.
Upcoming dates, as you heard, the second Thursdays will be implementation meetings. The first, the one coming up is September twelfth. On September twenty-fourth, there's a TERN conference. Hal, I don't remember what TERN stands for.
Teachers United.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I figured that out. Teachers United Reform Network. And this is related to Adam Urbanski and the Union Reformer who helped us with this, with our contract. This is actually a conference that's being put on out of our state by, I believe, the NEA, National Education Association. And it's about union reform and we'll be participating in that. On October fifth and sixth, Youth Leadership Institute. October twenty-fourth is the VSA and Vermont School Board Association Conference and we are presenting and doing, well, we are doing a TEDx presentation down there. On November fifth through eighth, the Nellie Mae's Cross Site Learning Conference takes place where Nellie Mae requires all four or five school districts who receive the grant to come together in New Hampshire, share their learning because we're all working on student engagement, personalized learning. We're all coming back at it from different ways. And so they bring us together. Kathy is your representative from the board. And Burlington, the city, is looking at a citywide book club that we might want to keep our eyes on. Liz, I'll pass this down to you, but I want it back. And the rest, I think you've heard here. Are there any other questions about Partnership for Change? Okay. Enrollment update, you have posted as of this morning, I've been getting daily enrollment updates from our data clerk. And we are four students under four thousand currently, pre-K to twelve. Our kindergarten class as of this morning, so as of yesterday, actually, is at three hundred and three students. Our highest class in the last few years was three hundred and nine. We, once again, are peaking. We went three oh nine, three oh four, we dropped to two eighty-eight, and we're back up to three oh three. So our population is continuing to grow. We're continuing to enjoy a very healthy, vibrant, and active school system and type. Any questions on enrollment?
Yeah, I do. I'm looking at the PK enrollment for next year, so this year is at two ninety-five. What, what does that mean?
It means three, four, three-year-olds and four-year-olds.
In any-
And that means all of the kids that we have serviced with because of our partnerships with pre-K centers outside of-
Outside the district.
Outside the district. We have partnerships with over twenty now. And in Burlington children.
Do we have any idea how that two ninety-five number would compare to previous years?
I don't.
Because basically, every single grade in the elementary school is at three hundred? Or within five kids?
You didn't ask the questions on Diversity Equity update, but everybody's asking questions after you, so I wanted to go back in time. How do you talk about training? Is there a training schedule with Washington Consulting for our teachers?
Yes, so training this year is threefold. One is we are bringing Washington Consulting back. We don't have the dates chosen yet. We've been in conversation with them and our plan is probably to bring them back twice, is what we hope to do within our budget. In addition, Sparks led a group of teachers, I see a couple in our audience right now, who worked very hard over the summer to create equity conversations for our Equity Council teachers and principals to continue on on a monthly basis within our schools. So we have defined conversations and menus that teachers, that principals can choose from. Some everyone will do, some will have some choice within different topics and we have the materials available, et cetera. And then third, the purpose of hiring a Director of Diversity Education and Engagement, which previously was filled by Dan Malon, was to have in-house training capacity and professional development capacity as well as support for work in the classrooms in the area of diversity and equity. And so as this person comes on board and becomes familiar, then we'll be transitioning more and more into that.
How many teachers do you expect to be trained this year?
I expect all teachers to be participating in the equity conversations. The trainings that Washington Consulting does is generally forty teachers per class, so about eighty more. Did I get that?
Okay.
Sorry, so the question, what is Parents for Change?
Parents for Change was, our Partnership for Change lead partner is Voices for Vermont Children. And their role is to actively work to engage parents. And Parents for Change in particular are new American parents who worked with the Voices for Vermont's Children last year to develop a voice among the new American parents. And last November, and they have appointed themselves Parents for Change. And last November, they held a community forum asking, identifying issues from the new American parent perspective of issues that they see with education in Burlington Schools for their children and asked to partner with the schools and get a commitment from the schools around those particular issues. And it was a very public process and we committed to five particular areas and we have been working on them. And since you asked, I will kind of update you all more fully as to what they were and progress reports on that. Keep going.
Yeah.
Okay. Co-curricular and athletics update, as you see on the board agenda tonight as well, as we still don't completely have all staffing and benefit pieces in the budget as we're closing that out, as hiring is still, is coming to a close. Benefits are usually adjusted during the month of September as new staff come on and either change their benefits or add benefits, et cetera. So all of that piece is not completely in, but we have been working. David and I and Amy Melinkamp met recently and looked at a number of areas where we could reinstate the funds that were cut in the last budget process to maintain the current level of co-curricular and athletics programs. And we are confident now that we are going to be able to do that. I had identified for you a number of different ways that we will be making adjustments. The memo is on board docs. And we'll be reporting out at the finance meetings our progress on each of those. In addition, Jeannie Holson and the two middle school athletic directors, well, Jeannie and Amy met already and identified even further some areas that could be adjusted without affecting the current level of co-curriculars or athletics. And Jeannie then will be meeting with middle school athletic directors shortly and we'll be looking at that. So the margin may be even more close as we go through, but we are at a point where I can confidently say that we will be able to maintain the current levels of co-curriculars and athletics for the current school year.
Any questions on that? Thank you. Oh, yeah, sorry, Miriam.
Okay, so I posed these questions earlier and I was hoping you might be able to trust them, so I'm very pleased to see this. I think it's great and I think it's all looked like potential places where we could find savings we need to fully fund things in front of ourselves. You have some particular questions. My first question is that I would be helpful to have some general budget numbers regarding how much you might expect in each of the six areas. In my mind, that would allow the finance committee to have a better way to gauge how things are earned. So that's, I never said you need to start there.
Sure, so it's not my intention to give you actual budget numbers for each one of these. It's my intention to report out to you how we're doing towards the savings in each one. You have budget numbers already, the line budgets of what we're spending in each one. So we're going to track the variance from that spending for you. I am aware of a number, you know, at my level of understanding, I need to be aware of exactly how we're going to be doing these. For example, we have cut out-of-district conferences except for two that we have pre-committed to. So that's going to save conference costs, that's going to save mileage costs. We have cut all consultation on local dollars, other than of course attorney fees, that type of consultation, but professional development type consultation on local dollars, other than Washington Consulting. We are continuing with Washington Consulting. We have local funds for magnet school marketing and promotion and I notified the magnet school principals that we need to cut that back by half, at least until we know where we are as the year goes on. We have done some work, we have put a freeze on the hiring of peer educators and we have put, we have done some communication and training around when substitutes are actually needed, when they're not. So we have identified a number of areas where we're going to be tracking the costs and have made some decisions on exactly how we're going to change the trends in those costs, but I am not putting an exact dollar at each one of these things.
Yes, I'd just like to go on my part saying, I don't think we need exact dollar, but I think it would be helpful to have some general ideas, for example, perhaps percentage-wise of these six categories, what percent do you think might come from each one in terms of the whole? I feel that otherwise it puts us at a disadvantage in terms of tracking the progress. And so I would, I think this is a finance committee issue and so I would like to suggest that the finance committee discuss at their next meeting how they are going to ensure that the tracking happens in a way that lets the board and the community know exactly where we are and whether this goal is feasible, because I would hate to, a couple of months down the road, discover it's not. But we might have been able to do something, we might have had more of an idea of this earlier if we had had more of the correct numbers, so.
Yeah, I would agree. I think the appropriate thing is for finance to take your recommendation and see what, you know, how it fits in with the, you know, the information that they require.
Patrick?
Yeah, I just, I want to, to second what Miriam's saying, because I think there's the potential for some sort of dangerous precedent here too, to say, oh, well, we can find six hundred thousand dollars in the budget or however much, then probably if we look a little bit harder, we can find that here too. So I think if we have some more accurate numbers that tells us how strapped we're making these, these different places and that we really are cutting, or maybe there's still fat to trim is, is the message they're giving. They can be heard.
Yeah, my, it must be.
Is that your cell phone?
Yep, that's the problem.
Should I go on to my next question?
Did you have some new? No. Mary, right.
Okay, so my next question is more directly than the line I was in that creature. You just went into a little bit more detail right now and I'd love to have that detailed somewhere in writing, so I don't have to go back to what you've described, it's just the specific things you're going to be at. But I did have a couple of questions. The first is just line of writing. So the first is athletics. And I just think it's a little bit ironic that we're going to be cutting athletics to save athletics. So I just wondered if we could get a little bit more of a sense. I think for me, that hinges on what exactly the word current level means. Does current level mean the same number of teams? Does it mean the same type of buses they ride on? Does, you know, what does it mean? So I think that would be like-
So we believe that the current level of co-curriculars and athletics is there are the same number of opportunities for students, same number of teams, same sports, no sport is being cut. It does not mean the same level of transportation or the same amount maybe of practice time or the same number of games necessarily. We're looking at all of those things.
And is that your understanding of what was the request? I mean, I think I never asked that question. I didn't realize that there was, you know, that's a definition we needed to know. And when we think back to what we were hearing from people, does that feel like that was what people were?
Yes, that there are places within the budget that where there could be savings that does not affect the quality of programs that the students have, the amount of programs the students have. The opportunities.
So when you say athletics, transportation, and non-personnel operational expenses, what's an example of a non-personnel operational expense?
Transportation would be an example of a non-personnel operational expense.
So that's there and this is an.
Transportation is ice time could be an example. Number of games could be an example. Maybe you would put this under personnel, but I might not. Where we have police officers, which games we choose to have police officers at, which ones we don't, meaning it doesn't affect coaches, but, so those are all things that we're looking at.
Okay, I guess I asked that more so that other people can be thinking about it too, because I do think that what we don't want to end up doing is cut back program so that it's not a robust program that can operate with kids safely and giving them the amount of practice they need in order to make sure that they are ready for their various sports. I think it's important. So I guess, I'm wondering if there is some perhaps group of people that are involved in athletics that will be working with you to determine which types of cuts are feasible and which aren't?
At this time, I would say that the answer really lies with the administration, meaning the high school and the athletic director administration, to bring the proposal forward and where they feel is an appropriate place. I mean, I really do, they know their program. They, Jeannie knows it inside out. One of the things that we were able to get to, which will help significantly, I think, is to be able to, with the use of this and with the new contract, because coaches are receiving an increase in the new contract, we're able to correctly identify what costs belong where and identify when costs were charged incorrectly. And so I think the athletic directors have a clear handle now on what the standing plan is and do feel that there are some places where some things would be made. Last year, when the board did cut athletics, the athletic programs were asked to undergo this exercise and they, they're ready to continue doing that now.
The other two areas that I just want a more clarity on are number five and six. You used the word controls on use of substitutes and controls on use of current parent educators. That's a broad term, controls on. And you did express, when you were talking a few minutes ago, two specifics, you were going to do some training about when it's appropriate to have substitute and when it's not. I guess I'd just ask for a little bit more detail about that, about both of them, both what other kinds of controls on the substitutes are going to save us money and what other kind of controls on use of current parent educators. And the second one actually concerns me more because I know that there is a high demand for parent educators.
There is a high demand for parent educators. In fact, our budget went over significantly last year with the addition of parent educators. And we are revisiting our model, both using positive behavior intervention supports and also looking at tier-two interventions and trying to decide if we are, if we are providing support to students in the most effective manner, both cost-effective but also instructionally effective manner, or is there another way? So before we're adding parent educators, we're undertaking analysis of a school and a need, particularly when it's general parent educators or for a child that hasn't gone through the IEP team process. So we're looking at, we're looking at that. It's not, we're putting some systems in place that ask some questions before it's just simply, oh, hey, you can have a parent educator. On substitute, it's the same kind of thing. There are some substitutes that absolutely have to be had. There are other times that a substitute could be utilized from within the school. For example, you don't necessarily need a full-day substitute for someone who has a two-hour dental appointment. Is there something that we can do about that? So we're having a hard time.
Okay, thank you for the adding.
Ben and then Mary.
Jeannie, I just wanted to say thank you to you and Jeannie and the rest of the staff for going through this. Because I know, nothing more fun than tight budget times to have to put things under the microscope. I do think it serves, as does all the budget work that's going on and will be going on to show that I think there are, it's a continuing education, at least for me as a board member, that the microscope can always be bigger to look at and find places for more efficiencies and possible cuts that we could do. I think this is important, I want to, you know, I'm book to the board and the board supported the suggestion of maintaining the effective program level. I think you really took that to heart and did that, that the sports and the co-curriculars will continue, understanding that there's going to have to be trade-offs. I think the community at large, you know, the boosters, et cetera, and all the parents understand that it's, because they did then and now, that it's a step up moment too. So it'll be an ongoing conversation. One of the things I'd like to make sure that we also have, and I'll be talking with you more about this, is conversations with the city about where else we can work things out financially that could help impact and offset this. Other city uses of school facilities, school uses of city facilities. Make sure that's an equitable trade and that the school district is getting the money that they should for use of its facilities and how does that, how can that feed into the overall budget and athletic and co-curricular budget as well. But thank you.
Meredith?
I guess, I think both of you have captured some of it. Because I just wanted to say, a lot of it, as you were talking to Jeannie, I was thinking about the past year increases. You know, since the cut that was made in the fall, I learned a lot more about, I don't know, how the plan is planned. So I've learned a lot more about the funding and what's missing and covering courses and what's hot, possible, you know, creative ideas of funding. And I just think that those conversations need to continue. So when I saw number one on there, I actually totally understood that. Number one, the athletics, transportation and other non-personal operations. I assumed that that was part of those conversations that were going on or that have been going on since that's really because they're restoring the cuts, you know, when some of that can get lost.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you move on?
Okay, safety and security updates. I just wanted you to be aware of a couple of things since we began. One, the Edmonds Elementary School Main Street interest is fully functional. If you'd like to enter Edmonds Elementary, you go in the Main Street door and the first door is open, not locked. Then there is an interior door with somebody who will let you through. We're piloting a new name badge machine as well there that seems to be really a novel thing. It takes your picture and everything. So that's in place. We have through some, we had some funds at the end of the year that we were able to apply towards security cameras in all of our schools. We have installed the system in a few places and we're working on installing either the system or at least the infrastructure for a system. Not every school necessarily wants one, but at least the infrastructure for the system in all schools. By policy, I get an update on a regular basis from our facilities director and Mark Irish has sent me an update as of September 4th of where we do have cameras and where we're headed. So I do have that. And then thirdly, Burlington High School has received a, as a security update, a swipe card locking system for the interior doors, which allows greater access, allows us to both lock down the building but also allows access to those students who need to access the interior doors through the courtyards, et cetera, between classes. And that's, that's a significant, I think, a significant security upgrade here at the high school. There's much more to do, but we are trying to work our way through our list as best we can. And we do keep infrastructure technology updated on a regular basis, just about monthly basis. Questions on security?
Safety, there's been a lot of discussion of bus safety. Particularly, are we communicating with the C C T A regarding whether if bus drivers drop students off and especially very young students at unusual time or some unusual place that parents get really up, really get nervous about that?
C C T A has a set schedule. They will pick kids up at a certain place, they will drop kids off at a certain place. Your question probably applies to the very few special education buses we have.
No, this is really the C C.
It is C C T A?
I wrote about it today.
Okay.
And, okay, so I wouldn't be doing more because I'm getting a lot of comments about it. But I just want, are we working with them closely regarding that?
We are, and I have found them to be very responsive. And, and parents are encouraged to let C C T A know directly as well.
Well, they, rather, they're not our buses, so I understand that, so.
But they do work closely with us and they do care for the kids. And Sparks is actually working with C C T A personnel to train them on harassment and bullying behaviors.
Okay, I understand that. But if the bus is full and they go by a whole bunch of students, do they kind of somehow let them know why they're doing that?
We have attempted to let parents know. This is particularly an issue for high school that if a student chooses to sleep in late to take a late bus to get to high school, there is a good chance that they won't get on the bus. There is an earlier bus that they're slotted to get on that's neighborhood special. There isn't a whole lot that we can do about that if students choose not to take the bus.
But I mean, if the bus goes by a group because there's nothing, can't let, does he just explain why he can't let them on?
I, I don't know if he explains it at the moment. I don't, I wouldn't know that. But we are, we're attempting to explain in advance by getting word out to parents that if you're choosing to take a bus that's not your neighborhood special, there may not be room for you.
Rebecca?
Just what Keith was speaking about was very much, actually, the end of last school year in the Old North End and many of the, even neighborhood specials were coming by full and students trying to get in time to go full. At least my understanding was after lots and lots of communication with, with Hunt directly and with C C T A, they did make some adjustments and added one. I believe, Liz, you may be able to speak to this more because you're in some of those emails. But they were able to add another bus so that those, I don't know how many of them were high schoolers and how many of them were middle schoolers, but at least in the Old North End, the buses that come through are going to hunt and to E H S. And so there's a lot of overflow. Which also, from a safety standpoint, means that there are 11-year-olds and 17-year-olds riding on the same buses together with only bus driver and no other adults, which.
Sometimes there's another adult, sometimes there's.
Not.
Depends on where you're at.
Meredith?
Yeah, I want to echo this because we had, I think Keith Myers mentioned so many kids in I A that just happened to announce in the Old North End across from, sustainably last Wednesday and high school starts at nine.
Any Wednesdays?
On Wednesdays. Wednesdays. So there were about 20 kids at bus down and the bus went bypassed them this quarter to line. So I went up and talked to them, like I said, this is a lot. And they said, yes, can happen a bunch of times. I said, do you bring you late to school then? They said, yes. So something's going on.
Yeah, and I'll repeat again that there is a bus run that is a bit earlier that's intended for students that a lot of high school students are choosing not to take because they do want to sleep. It is difficult and there's.
But says the wind.
Could be, it could, yeah. I mean, because C C T A does not adjust the neighborhood specials for late start high school. And parents are told this in advance. And so there are some options, some choices that kids make that may result in a writing at school.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to bring this up, but it's interesting that the bus issue has come up. So there've been a number of safety-related bus issues in the last couple of days coming from Edmonds down to the South End, including one yesterday that was quite intense for the students that were on the bus. And I'm just wondering, it seems like there's a number of issues about bus safety. I also heard early in the year that parents were concerned because they couldn't get good bus information off the website. They felt that the website was difficult to get to and then they would call C C T A and not be able to get the information. I'm wondering if it's time for us to create some sort of bus committee that can look at the program and just sort of ensure that we're communicating directly to C C T A, that our information is correct, that we are creating the safest bus experience for our kids. And so I guess I'm asking who's in charge and how can we as a board make sure that that happens?
I guess the only thing I'd ask is, I mean, could you describe how we do our face with?
Sure, C C T A is its own entity and it has, it provides transportation to Burlington schools through neighborhood specials at about one-third the cost of what it would cost us to provide private transportation, either ourselves or through consulting with the private. So it is a significant tax savings for Burlington parents. We do allow free transportation for students who live within a mile from school, which generally is for elementary school and for much of middle schools. And we subsidize that cost, we pay for that. C C T A does have its own contract, it has its own regulations, particularly federal regulations, and it has limitations on what it can and cannot provide, which we have been working with. Up until this year, Terry Bailey has been our contact for the last five years. Starting this fall, we switched over to Joel Fitzgerald, co-director of facilities, to be our contact with C C T A. We meet the C C T A at the beginning of the year, we meet at the end of the year, we meet throughout the year as necessary. When parents, when there are concerns, parents are asked to contact C C T A. We also carry the concern to C C T A. We often sit and brainstorm with C C T A about how, how might this be resolved? We also help communicate with C C T A, who does care very much that they're giving good service within the limitations that they have and they might provide communications to us. For example, what I was talking about when the buses actually are for the high school in the morning. They have responded when they could with adding additional runs. We have responded when our mutual communications tell us that we need to put a bus monitor on a bus. A bus monitor is at our expense, not their expense. We do have video cameras on the buses and the bus drivers are trained to give the videotape to the principal each day as they drop the kids off. They're not getting a new one as they pick up the kids later. And then we handle all bus behavior incidents. We're notified by the driver, we have the videotape and we handle all bus behavior incidents. For an urban busing situation, I think that, you know, it's working very well. It's not the same as having our busing company. It doesn't have the same flexibility as having our own bus company, but also does have the same cost. So that's, that's, I don't know if that's the question that's asked, but that's our, that's what we do.
I mean, I guess I want to make sure that everybody knows that we do have contract, we do have.
Regular contract.
There is work that goes on, but I think also kind of understanding the process of which issues are communicatable to the district and to C C T A now that we've got.
I just, I think, I, is, is there consistency in the drivers on the routes?
There is not. That's actually part of the regulations that C C T A deals with in their own contract with drivers. But that is why this year in particular, Sparks has taken it upon himself to work with C C T A. He apparently wants to answer that question.
There are not consistent drivers. However, I did have a train family who had all supervisors in the operations director last week. So they are more than willing to work with us this year, some of the safety concerns of me doing around student safety and some of the other concerns back there, send doctors to me here and me to us here at the school and high school. So they are ready to work with us. One of the things I did find out from them, they're limited that what they can actually do towards me. So they are willing to sit there to be in work close with us. But more say the neighbors well, if they didn't ask that they can work with us close with us.
Yeah, I did.
I have a number of studies.
Transportation, have we done that? Oh, yes, that's actually underway. We are part of the Champlain Valley Superintendent, I guess it's really Chittenden County superintendents, who are, are working together on a proposal to study transportation and how it's done across the entire county. And is there a more efficient use of the way it's done? Now, most of the districts around us have their own transportation department or they lease services from Mountain Transit or somebody like that. But we have two technical centers in our region. We have kids being bussed back and forth from different districts to those centers. Is there a better way of doing things? And that's underway. We most recently, I think within the last three or four weeks, provided data to Wynton Goodrich, who was heading that study and has collected data from all the different school districts that indicate where, where we need busing times, we need buses, things like that. So that is underway, but I don't have any results yet.
So I guess I'm wondering if we might, you said Joel was in charge of the mediation of C C T A and all busing. What committee, I suggest this you out, would be appropriate committee to sort of hear from Joel more and ask him what's.
Yeah, it would be I T C, construction technology.
So I'd like to recommend, see what people feel about perhaps having I T C look at that. For me, the primary issue would be safety because I have sort of a number of kids on the bus. I understand that the issue coming from Edmonds, what happened was there was a monitor on that particular line, but the bus was so crowded that the monitor could not get to the back of the bus where the altercation was happening. So it was moot that the person was on the bus because it was because the bus was packed with kids standing in the aisle. So I guess for me, it would be asking I T C to look into what are the safety, are there any things about safety we should be looking at? And then the other thing would be communication to parents about what the issue that Keith brought up or the issue of schedules. And then perhaps I T C communication to bring back to the board, so.
Okay, I, you know, I think we're going to take that and reply. Any questions?
I think it's also an issue of equity because if you have, whether or not teenagers are going to sit in, which is highly likely, you know, the fact that the Old North End kids are picked up last and the buses are passing by because it's so full of kids from south of, you know, Fourth Street, that becomes an equity issue. Even if you find out it isn't truly, you know, there's something going on there. You know, the fact, in their eyes, that's how they see it.
Okay, keep going. So Calendar 2.0 is, I just wanted to give you an update on that. The Champlain Valley superintendents are having a conversation that's really focused on what will work best for students learning using the variable of time or calendars constructed in this place. You heard Partnership for Change talking about time earlier as a variable. The superintendents met today and are planning on holding four, community forums to engage the community in, get in, in this discussion, to engage the community into what construct would work best for kids. There is a proposal in the calendar. I have sent to you the website, you can go on our website, link to the website in Calendar 2.0. And we're asking that we get out the words, and I thank you then, Brett, I thank you for getting out the word, to have people involved in these forums. The forums are scheduled for October 2nd at Essex High School, October 3rd at B F A St. Aldens, October 9th here at Burlington High School, and October 10th at C V U. All forums start at 6:30. And these are going to be working forums, trying to get creative ideas around how if, what are, knowing the variables such as start date, end date, we have 175 days, we have limited resources, what is the most efficient use of time? And again, there are some calendars to, our calendar proposal to respond to. The results of the forum will come back to the forums, will be public and will come back to the superintendents. Superintendents must make a decision on a common 175-day calendar for the next school year each January. That common calendar goes back to the boards for boards to add to. The boards cannot change the common 175, but boards could create early release dates. In our case, there are two additional student days that need to be added. The boards, our board would decide where they would go, et cetera. I do want to stress that the Calendar 2.0, while it's put out there as a 13, 14, no, 14, 15 calendar, it is not a done deal. It's, it's really open and up in the air and superintendents are very interested in input, ideas and, and really are trying to undertake for the first time ever a community conversation rather than just an automatic stamp of approval of a calendar that's been in existence for 150 years. So I encourage you to let people know, to direct them to the website, to invite people to these forums to participate. And I'll be keeping you informed as well along the way.
Patrick?
Curriculum committee is going to have this on our agenda for next Tuesday night. And so if people want to come for public comment or come, and they're certainly welcome to join in the discussion as we, as we continue around that. So, 5 o'clock Tuesday.
Meredith?
I had a question, Patrick.
Yeah.
Hans?
Hans?
You know, suddenly realized that individual boards really don't have much say, so I'm just wondering, is the idea behind curriculum just to hear what the rationale is?
So I, actually, I think individual boards have a lot more say than we think. If a board tells their superintendent they really think it's a really, really bad idea to do this, and then the superintendent goes ahead and puts it in paper, and I'm not, like, I don't mean that as a failed threat, but I mean, it really doesn't, I really don't mean it like that. Or if a board tells the superintendent they really think this is a very, very good idea, we're strongly in favor of it, and the superintendent goes against that, that's indirect, that's indirect influence on the decision. And I also think that there's a pulpit aside, that the community can get involved in it, the board can get involved in it, in passing out, you know, in facilitating a larger conversation. Now, I don't know that anything probably is going to happen, I don't know, but I would say so far that we just throw up our hands and say whatever happens, happens.
Mary.
I just wanted to point out for anyone who doesn't know, that Alan and G and I did a Channel 17 thing on this laptop, was it?
Last year.
Now you can Google it, and you can see it, and it's a little bit long and boring, but it gets to a lot of really, I think, good things. And one of the things that we did try and do is, all of us as board members have been hearing input from the community about people that are in favor with, or some people who have concerns about it. So we tried to raise those concerns so that the community could know that we do that, but I'm sort of mixed about Patrick's view. I think it's important for the community to know that in fact, we as a board do not have direct influence on this decision, the community does not have a choice. So I got an email today that said, you know, I'd like to know what the board's opinion is, is whether you're going to accept it or reject it. So I had to email back to this constituent and say, the board could have an opinion on this, but it is not, we do not have authority to accept it or reject it. So what, for me, that says we need to be on top of it early if we want to have the influence that Patrick was talking about. So I would encourage all community members to talk about it, think about it, let us know what you think, read what's out there, go to those forums, and don't be shy about letting us know.
Yeah, I, three seconds, I don't, I think I agree with everything Mary said.
And, you know, I, having been the superintendent who led the community through socioeconomic integration discussions, I think this is similar. It's the first time in ever that we know of, where superintendents have engaged the community in, are we providing the best learning environment that we possibly could provide within the resources we have or not? As opposed to, the routine has been, my experience is sitting on C D S A for 150 years in the state, that the superintendents would simply go and recreate the same calendar basically year after year with some minor tweaks. So it's time to open the conversation. Where it goes, I don't know, I can't say, but the conversation, I think it is time to open it, and I'm pleased that Partnership for Change also acknowledges that time is a variable in student learning. So I hope that you do, everybody who's watching, I hope that you do participate in whatever were the forums.
Mary.
I would also like to encourage people to respond to us in writing, and I think that's a big help. Getting told in the grocery stores, I go down the grocery aisle, and by the way, I don't like that, is helpful, but I can't guarantee that I'm going to carry that forward. So I would like to encourage people, put in writing, to send it to me, or to their board member, and copy, or vice versa.
And whatever I get, I share with all the superintendents.
Because, and I did, Greg and Bernie and I were at Smith PTO last night, and we encourage people to get, if you have interest or concern, now is the time to say something, not April, that it's going to be too late then. So if you have concerns.
Similar to the athletics discussion.
Yeah, if you wait, it just makes it that much more complicated, and you get more frustrated. So if you have concerns, now's the time to do it.
Keith.
I think our responsibility as board members is to continually do the front porch forum reminder, the, in social media, we have the, we do, reading Free Press today, the parents that didn't know about it, you know, they don't all read the Free Press, they don't all listen to M P R, V P R, they've done C C, but our Channel 17, we just have to use all the social media that we have available to get the word out. And when I talk to the liaisons, I will be also be talking about this.
Yes, I appreciate you talking with liaisons about the bunch of process and bringing this as well.
I will bring this also.
I want to add two things, one of which is, you know, the board always can do something, like pass a resolution in an agreement or an disagreement, or something like that. So the board can make a statement, you know, officially for the record. And the second thing is not just to the citizens of Burlington. I was in a rather amusing conversation where someone from McChelverin said to me, oh my God, I can't believe this Calendar 2.0, how are you going to deal with that? And I said, wait a minute, wait a minute, your kids go to C V U, right? And they said, yes, and I said, you'd better take a look, C V U is part of this, you would have the same calendar we do. So it's kind of interesting, I think maybe there's a little more awareness actually in Burlington than in a few other areas right now, so, you know, keep it aware across the area.
This actually hasn't new, C V U was in the, I think in the 70s, about year around the school, it was a major discussion, and obviously that district only, but I mean, it seems, I think it's interesting, the whole conversation's coming back again, what's the best use of our students' time and hours? So, I mean, what comes around goes around, and this is it again.
I will move on, I guess, to the next.
So I have one item left.
Yeah.
One item left, and I'd like Nikki to actually speak to this. We are recommending tonight, Deverne Bell, as Director of Diversity, Education, and Engagement. Deverne is from the Vancouver area, and has been in the K-12 public education sector for 16 years doing this work. And that's kind of a first for us, somebody coming into the job with both the work experience and the K-12 experience at the same time. So we're very excited to have her. I did provide for you, and it is posted on Board Docs, Deverne's resume, and cover letter, and other information about her. And Nikki led the search, so I'm going to ask Nikki and whoever she'd like to speak.
I just wanted to try and find. Hello. I hate these things. Can you hear me? No.
The people are at home.
Oh, well, okay. My first one is, it was quite a lot of work, I just wanted to make sure, and I thanked a search advisor, which included Leith Bruder, Julie Capboll, and Dar Staudt, Hal Holston, LaShawn Winkinsales, and Sparks, Linda Wassley, Karen Vogel, and Grant Park. Oh yeah, myself. That was our committee. And so they're here also to speak on behalf of Deverne. It was, as we said, a difficult process, we came down to some very good candidates, but determined that we felt that Deverne was the best candidate. She, she was the embodiment of exactly what we were looking for. She's done every job in our office, she's been a recruitment and retention person, she's been the equity director, she's been the director of diversity education, she's done all three jobs. So we figured just in case, she'd be perfect, just in case somebody was on, you know, she could pick up where, you know, we were missing. She, but what I did want to sort of add was, I was the person who did all the references, checked with every reference, and spoke to six, seven people. And there were three things that they all said. When I asked them, how would you characterize Deverne Bell, they each said, student-centered, knowledgeable, and committed. And sometimes they added more, or it was, but those three things came out of every person. And in her interview, it was very clear that she was very student-centered, and very committed to this kind of work. And her level of knowledge in this area was just absolutely amazing. And we felt that we're really lucky that she actually wanted to come here, all the way from the state of Washington. She has quite a bit of experience, but I want to keep talking, and make sure everybody else sort of gives their little, come on, that's work. Thank you.
I was particularly struck by how thoughtful she was, how sensitive she was, and how careful she was in her interview and the things that she said, so I look forward to working with her and, you know, being on the phone with her.
I was really excited about her. She, I think, really understands the meaning and the implications of the achievement of, and really gets why we're here and doing this work, and why we're so committed to that in Burlington. So I was just thrilled at listening to her speak during the interview process, and I'm excited to have someone like that here with us.
I was really struck by her passion for this work, and, you know, knowing that it's not going to be easy, but I really believe that she's going to give us her best, and I think she'll be a great resource, and very personable, and I think we're going to have a great future in this work with someone like her and her fellow board.
The one thing I quickly ask from the board is, a couple people had said to me that they were thinking that they might want to pull the item off the consent agenda, in large part because it would be a discussion of a particular hire, and I guess what I wanted to ask is, if people had some questions about the process, maybe in particular now, if I might be able to ask them of, you know, if that was the case, if I was wanting some more information about the, that's what I'm trying to do, to get more information out right now, I miss.
Joe.
I have a question on the process, but Linda, it's interesting, what came away from her, in terms of her experience with New Americans who rose to this.
Yeah, and that was what I was looking for in the questions and answers of all the candidates, and she definitely has had experience in Washington, working with New Americans, and there's also English speakers, and there's our fans who have lived in that area, and we have students over in English, so I was very happy with her answer, and in the way that she addressed the needs of students, it looks like she has a lot of experience working in the country.
Could you recall, like, what the percentage of the student population was that fit in that category, like how her work experience compares to the?
I don't know. I can't. Exactly. The school district she came from, well, she came, there were two, Tacoma, but also Vancouver, and Vancouver's demographic is very similar to this area, and what she was surprised by was the items were actually a little bit higher. So she was surprised by that, but she definitely had that experience, because they sort of went through a very similar transformation as we did.
A couple of things, Nikki, and one thing you just barely said that got me thinking, that when you said that our numbers are higher, are you saying our diversity numbers are higher?
Yes.
That would be interesting, since currently we don't have this director, and with the director, we have higher numbers, but that's another question. When you said that one of the great things about this hire would be that because of her experience, she would be able to fill in for this group when they're out for something, vice versa, does this group of people, and this is what I want to find out, is if this group of people that we have in, including Sparks, who show that good, I think is very talented and has a lot of experience, can we not fill this position with you guys?
Could I answer that?
Somebody can.
If I understand the question directly, or correctly, it's, do we need this position? And is that not correct?
Not do we need this position, I think we do, and I think we need to keep striving towards diversity. Do we not already have the talent and expertise here to do the job that we're already doing better than the district that this person is coming from?
Well, we are doing it very well, but we've also been doing it very well for about a year and a half. I mean, we haven't been doing it very well prior to that. And so the diversity plan really has four legs in it. We did open the position internally, and there wasn't an internal candidate with the level of experience that this person could bring to us, and that's what an interview process is all about, you know, you look at what you have internally and externally. But this position in the diversity equity, the diversity argument in our future plan, this position is crucial, especially because we can't continue to afford bringing in Washington Consulting year after year to, I mean, they've been very effective, but we need to build the capacity internally, and within, with our, while we have very talented people, we don't have the capacity to expand the responsibilities of those people and fill this position. So we need somebody, we need somebody to fill that role. And we did a search that included internal and external, and she rose to the top. Does that help? Does that answer your question?
Okay.
Okay.
Linda.
Well, I just wanted to.
No, no, I'm sorry, Linda, Linda Keith, then you, sorry.
No.
No, Linda, Linda, no.
I have a couple of concerns. One, I echo what Greg is saying in that I am thinking ahead and thinking that we're going to have a tough sell with the budget situation, particularly in my end of town, and if we're hiring new people, that's going to be a tough sell, when we've already got a deficit from last year, and I don't know where we stand right now for this year. And so I'm just wondering if we can't continue to put this position on for a year. I also have to say, I was really concerned when, last night, I looked at the consent agenda and saw her name, and I Googled it, and there was nothing. I found absolutely nothing on the website, there, on Yahoo, two or three other places that we looked during the day. It did pop up late this afternoon, that obviously she put stuff up, because it did, her resume and stuff appeared on the, when I Googled it late this afternoon.
Are you talking about Board Docs? Because I didn't.
No, I'm talking, I wanted to know about her outside of this process, and anybody who's doing that kind of work, I think we ought to be able to.
Okay, I think that something that we have to be aware of, Linda, is that, you know, while we can say that we may or may not want to make a hire, I would be concerned that we as a board are doing things that might second guess a, you know, process that's been described to us. I mean, if there's a fault with the process, that's one thing, but I would be concerned if we as board members are second guessing a process.
Okay, see, at the time, we didn't have any information when I was going, there was nothing on the Board Docs or anything. But I, my basic underlying concern is, I think this is going to be a very hard thing to sell in our end of town, when we already have a very fairly robust staff, a very talented people, and a lot of money put into that. I think I can hear people saying, how can we afford to do this? And then we're going to cut direct services to kids, like educational assistance, which really impacts from parents and voters' perspective. So I have some real concerns about that.
Okay, okay. Sorry, Keith, actually.
Who's?
Keith, it was Keith.
I just wanted to ask the committee, when you kind of looked at me when you said Washington Consulting.
Because you asked about it, that's why.
I, okay. Is she able to do in-house training?
Yes, she is, and in fact, all of us do in-house training, her role will be very much like Dan's was, which is to do a lot of in-house training that we need to do. In fact, one of the things the department has been talking about is to have regularly scheduled diversity topics going on that teachers and staff can actually register for, so it may be sort of like a college handbook, you can just look and decide what questions you want to take. Reality is, we have to, if we really want to see the district change, or we want to see the climate change, this has to be an ongoing, regular conversation every day, every week. Having Washington Consulting group coming twice a year, or even three times a year is not going to do a boat.
And that's why it prompted my question, because we had previously a person who needed to go out to do training, and wasn't capable, the capacity or capability, you're saying she will be able to do the direct training of the 40 teachers here in the area that Washington, so it will not be Washington Consulting?
Well, I'm not suggesting you won't need Washington Consulting, I guess I won't say need. I believe, and this is my personal view, I haven't checked on anybody else on this, but my personal view is you have to have in-house training on a regular basis, but you do have to bring outside voices in as well, because sometimes it's hard to see what you don't see, because you're so involved in. So to have a group or a speaker come in once or twice a year is not unusual, but the regular, everyday climate. the regular, everyday climate change and conversations that we need to have, we need to have someone in that position.
Liz.
I just wanted to speak to the issue as a member of the Diversity and Equity Committee and just having a history with Diversity and Equity Task Force and just share my observations. And first Linda, I just want to mention that a number of professionals actually scrub the web because it can leave you vulnerable professionally if you leave stuff up there. So, in many cases, it's actually very intentional not to be vulnerable to Google searches, but like I check the web about myself all the time to make sure that it's, you know, pretty clean. So, what I wanted to share is that we've seen incredible talent and energy and work from Sparks and Nikki and Linda and more recently Hal on the Diversity and Equity Task Force and that's really exciting. I think that, you know, what was really rewarding about coming off the task force experiences at the district, as nearly as I can tell, maybe not your neighborhoods, but has united around this kind of very ambitious and important goal of achieving equitable outcomes for all students. And I, you know, I think if there are still people who are uncomfortable with achieving equitable outcomes for all students, then, you know, that just speaks to the need for someone who can provide more capacity to educate people about that need. And, you know, despite our staff's talent and energy, they are being asked to do a lot and they've already done a tremendous amount. And I think that the Gantt chart that was produced of the Equity Report Card shows the work plan, you know, they come to the committee and say it'll be done in a year and I'm like, I hope not, because no one got a vacation and everybody knew where it was this year. But moreover, you know, I think coming off the experience of partnership or changing not having a leader, we saw, I feel like, you know, despite the great work of the fellows who were spending, you know, their first year trying to launch that, it was challenging not to have someone like Hal be able to coordinate and plan and provide the leadership and, you know, really guide the staff. I think, you know, that's a big need in trying to do difficult work and to get that support. So, you know, I can't, I think it's not a moment too soon to have someone with this person's skill and, you know, gifts that they have to offer us and really bring Burlington into the next decade and beyond to really, you know, change literally the base of our school district that needs that so much, you know, after we've just spent years diving into this and establishing that and really seeing the deficiencies. And I really want to thank you all for, you know, doing this work and finding such an incredible looking person.
Jill and Linda.
It's already in our budget and it feels like we're going backwards in our conversation. We already valued the position in our budget process last year, so I think that that's sort of a moot point. And as far as the Google goes, I found so much stuff on her that I couldn't get through it all and at the same time, I also want to say, how many other candidates for other positions have we as board members Googled? This came out really clear during previous hiring process that it was only the brown people that we were Googling and I almost sensed sort of resistance to hiring somebody from the outside and I completely appreciate the reason why somebody from the outside is actually a really good thing to weigh in. And I also just want to caution us about if there was somebody that was an internal candidate, I trust the process, they would have risen to the top and we just need to check ourselves about our own biases and if we're gonna Google potential new hires, we need to Google every single one of them.
Linda.
If this person is hired, how, do they have any expertise or in the area of special ed, which I think is a diversity issue, and also in the area of kinship and the number of families that we have in Burlington that are, where kids are being raised by relatives? I was looking for that specific kind of expertise and I don't see that at all. Is with another person, this has been an ongoing concern that I've raised with Dan and raised with Henry and we have at least probably 300 families in Burlington that are being raised, kids are being raised by relatives. Are we planning to include that too for the diversity and equity issues and all?
I would assume we try to include everyone in our diversity conversations and work, so yes, that would be the case.
When would that start? Because that hasn't been, it's been an ongoing concern of mine to try to raise this issue and it's an invisible population and it hasn't been addressed. And I can, how long have I been talking with you about it?
Greg, I believe that it is being addressed and we are working on addressing it. There have been a number of ways, such as looking at the forums, that we're working our way through. Since I am one of those parents you're talking about, I'm very aware-
I know you are. You don't have any, you have your kids in Burlington right now?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I can't keep up with your kids here. But that's a very invisible population and a growing population.
Yes, it is.
And if we're gonna hire more people than I would expect, if we're going, I really need some assurances that we're gonna take on with a serious effort doing that part, which is gonna be hard.
Yeah, and let me just make one comment to those, a couple of other comments. I think that would be something that again would come back to diversity, just as some of the school bus issues perhaps go to ITC and there was a budget request that I suggested should be looked at by finance, so I think diversity should continue to be, you know, aware of that. And Rebecca and Greg.
Well, just a follow-up on Linda's, maybe you weren't at the meeting, but at the other point, we approved the charge of the advisory committee, that language was added.
I know, we added it, I remember.
Right, that is part of this work. So, the language is there as a data marker as part of this plan. So, in terms of what have we been doing and what are we doing, it's now identified as a data point.
Yeah, I know, but it was, the history was, it was in the language, then it got removed from the language, then it got put back in the language and I'm feeling like I have to continue to address it in order to keep it on people's front burner because it isn't on people's front burner.
Greg and Jill.
Nikki, just to be absolutely crystal clear, I love what Burlington is doing with diversity because when I grew up in Milton, it literally was white person, white person, white person. And I love the way in the last 30 years Burlington has changed. We need to be engaging that and doing better. My only concern is, do we not already have the expertise here that can do this job and save with benefits, you know, 150K? That is money that we desperately need and can use. Can we not do the job in-house? And if not, why not? In 30 seconds.
Greg, do you have any other questions?
But I would also like to say as board chair, Greg, you know, we have approved a budget that has this position in it.
And where did that sit?
And we have approved a budget that has this position in it. And I think that perhaps is a valid question to say the board in the end decides we don't want to fill a position, but I think I would have to say that I had heard an answer to that question already, which was from the superintendent, from a member of the Diversity and Equity Committee and from the people who spoke here, that their judgment right now is that this hire is needed. And I guess I feel like that was a question that I thought I had heard answered by three different parties already.
If I may say one more thing, a year and a half ago or a year and a quarter ago, I stood in front of this community and I committed to, with the plan in place, to improve the conditions for all students within Burlington schools, which includes eliminating as best I can bullying, harassing, racist behaviors. In doing so, I developed a plan that was a long-term strategic plan and that plan with the help of this committee was renewed this year and the board has adopted that plan through the work of the policy and the board strategic plan. This position is crucial. Will we always need it? I hope not. I really hope not. Do we currently need it? Absolutely. Nikki, Sparks, Linda worked around the clock. Sparks probably has taken a total of five vacation days over the last two years that I'm aware of, for one, and Nikki hit the ground running in October and I'm not even sure if she realizes that way the next school year yet. And Linda is meeting day and night with as many people as she can. They did pick up, with the loss of the director last January, they did pick up as best we could, the training pieces that this fourth leg of the table had. They did a phenomenal job and I'm sorry to say, it wasn't enough. We saw the conversations taper in the schools. We couldn't provide the support that was needed in the schools. They just couldn't meet all the demand at a critical time when we're trying really hard to change the culture in these schools. Too often in the past, this district has committed to doing something in the area of diversity and then pulled back way too soon. We're still in this critical time. Down the road, can this department have fewer people? I would love to say yes. Right now, absolutely not. And again, I did present it to the board and every year, the board has a chance to look at the budget and determine if the personnel is correct or not correct, but from the commitment that I made to this community, I still stand behind the fact that this is a needed position.
Jill.
I want to call my fellow board members on board efficiency. I mean, it's now almost nine o'clock, we haven't got through the superintendent's report. There've been a number of comments that were just reiterating or echoing what other people have said. We now are in a decision about whether or not we're gonna approve this hire and we're going back to conversations that have to do with the strategic plan that was already accepted that Jeanie created. And I would welcome anybody who has questions about the workload of the Diversity and Equity Office to read the documents that go to the Diversity and Equity Subcommittee where each one of them do a monthly report about what they're working on. And I hope that we can keep on tracking on the agenda and get through the rest of the stuff on the, for tonight.
Miriam, I think you can do it here.
Who else? If Jill says that, I don't know.
Patrick.
But just one thing, I just want to remind everyone of the teachers, the teachers actually have asked for more training, they've come to the board, they've come in and, you know, that's what this position, one piece of this position, so.
Thank you for your work. I trust the process. Looking at the resume, the one thing that jumped out to me, and I just wanted to assure you that you checked this out, there's no work history from August 2010 for the last three years on the resume that we have in front of us and it says, please do not contact previous employer, the last employer. I assume you guys checked out all of that stuff? Is that one of those things employees look at a lot?
Did you contact the last employer? Did you contact the last employer?
And when Tacoma cut their program, she's been doing primarily consulting work. So, there is, there was an explanation for that.
I assume that that's the one thing that looked.
Okay.
I just want to clarify first. And this position on consent agenda-
This position, yes. And thank you very much. Okay, all right. What I just want to remind the board, I mean, we are about to ask for a motion for approval of consent agenda. If someone would still feel as if they would like to have an out of vote of separately for whatever reason, after the motion to approve the consent agenda is made and seconded, that would be a point in time which would ask, much like when you amend an agenda to have removed, we vote on the consent agenda, then we will look at the items that have been removed. So, at this point, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Patrick, second by Rebecca. Are there any items in the consent agenda that anyone would like removed?
I would like to move that one. If you want to move it also, it's still easy to talk about it right now, do something.
Right, I mean, but first we would, yeah.
Just to see if we can, if we're getting out of that.
Yeah.
Is the only item on the consent agenda?
Also on the consent, just a second. Minutes. See, also as part of the consent agenda are the minutes.
The minutes for the planning committee on September 3rd are incorrect. I was attending, I was in attendance.
Planning committee on September 3rd?
Okay, so, we don't necessarily have to pull them, we just remove those.
Just make sure you're doing it.
Yeah, okay.
So, you asked for it to be removed?
Yeah, so this, yeah, this one item will be removed at this point? So do you?
On the ITC minutes, there was an error that I did not catch when I reviewed them and it was the motion to adjourn the meeting was made by Linda Del Duca, who was not present at the meeting. How she'd been there, she probably wouldn't have had to make that move.
I'm really good.
So, I think it was Liz who actually made the motion, so I kept that, minor adjustment.
Okay, Liz.
I wasn't at the August 13th board meeting, so I have to abstain from that somehow.
From that one item?
Right.
Okay, could you note that for one particular item, Commissioner Curry will abstain from voting on the August 13th board minutes?
I think I'm announcing.
You know, I think what I would like procedurally to look at, sorry, is procedurally look at this. We will take it under advisement if you weren't there, but I will look into a process on this.
Parliamentary position, Jill, of course. You're either supporter or not. It's like, I wasn't at all the other committee meeting, but I'm taking it on faith that they're being reviewed and committed, so.
I think Commissioner Trimmer is direct on this.
I'm either voting for or not, for my two opinions.
So, with two minor corrections to two sets of minutes, aside from the one hiring approval, all in favor of the consent agenda items say aye. All opposed? And at this point, I guess we would take as, you know, as an item to look at separately would be the recommend the hire of Deveron Bell. And I guess-
You never got back to board updates after the superintendent report?
That's down for, that's after consent.
I thought you said you were gonna, okay. I thought you started doing your report, you said Jeanie, you go and then we'll move back to board member updates after Jeanie, but.
Sorry, the confusion there is I thought it was done, I thought I gave time to the board, but we can go back to that. But at this point, I, you know, effectively as somebody that was able to, actually would then actually, would actually have to request a motion to approve the recommend the hire of Deveron Bell, I think, so moved by Commissioner Halliday in a second, from Jill. Is there any discussion of this? And Miriam, you know, you originally asked to have, so I would ask, you know.
Yes.
Yeah, I would ask.
So, I was not on the board last year, not actively involved in the planning and diversity and equity department, but I think I just wanted to tell my fellow commissioners that I would abstain from this vote. And the reason is because although I completely and totally am in favor of the diversity efforts, I don't know if I'm familiar enough about the how and I am not comfortable endorsing the how, it's not particularly this particular hire, but the how, so I just wanted to explain my vote. That was my comment, so I just wanted to take it out so that I have a chance to do that.
Miriam.
I just wanted to say that I'm very, very uncomfortable that this one hire is causing so much discussion. I haven't seen this the last five years, except for the last time, we had two principal hires and they were held up for 20 years. And I think it's really troubling to me that we've now spent 20 or 30 minutes talking about this one person.
You know, I think it's important that we respect the views of all, you know, board members and, you know, I think anytime there is a hire, the board does have a valid chance to say something. I think that also needs to be appreciated.
I absolutely agree. I just would question why this hasn't happened on any other hires in the last five years related to-
Okay, I appreciate it.
But not, yeah, and that's, I understand that, but it's not on for a long time, this discussion.
And Linda.
I guess, I still have some reservations about the how, of how we're gonna integrate and get the kinship situation and special ed, because I still see those as an integral part of the diversity and the, I don't see, I don't know, I need some assurances, I guess, leap of faith or something, that that is gonna continue to be ignored.
Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments, all in favor of the recommend the hire of Deveron Bell. Bell, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? What? And abstain? What else? That is, that hire is approved as well? Jill? I'm sorry.
I'm assuming that they saw this as an economic model, I was just told. And I'm, I'm concerned about this candidate reading this reception, so I just want to bring that up and think about how we might welcome this candidate and if we vote to hire them, how we might welcome this candidate. Okay, then how are we gonna, how are we gonna welcome her?
I will be sending out a press release shortly. I'm not prepared to do that tonight because other things have my attention. But I will be sending out a press release shortly. Nikki has been working on an entry welcoming, an onboarding plan, she calls it, as well. And there have been, we've had several conversations with her as well, and she intends to start on October 21st.
I guess something from a board perspective to mitigate any kind of press about the conversation.
Nikki may have some ideas about that, how the board might welcome the new candidate.
Patrick.
I think one thing that would be important for us, the tenor of the conversation I heard was more about a budgetary, a budgetary issue as opposed to qualifications of the individual candidate. And I think it was also, it was also laudatory of some people who are already working in the district to say, we trust their abilities and is this, are they still, is there still sufficient to deal with the issues of responnecure? I didn't hear, honestly, I probably had the most pointed question on qualifications and I just wanted to clarify that, that I would have asked, and I asked myself, this was a principal hire, I would have asked the exact same question, just whether it's a free career or employment history. And I was happy with the response that I got and the conversation that I heard was much more about distribution of finite resources over the qualification of the candidate.
I heard Google searching and why didn't we hire an internal candidate? So that's...
Okay, I appreciate that. I think that at this point, we should move on to the committee reports.
Finance, finance committee, okay. We met on the 27th, as you can see on the minutes, basically, there are a couple things I wanted to explain on here. Talk about, number one, is the, whatever our, our fund balance is in minus, it seems to be flexible. I talked about three, eight hundred thousand last, last month, it's down around three hundred thousand. We don't know where it's going to be when it finally puts back the fiscal 13 budget. And we are very concerned about the fiscal 14 budget. We do not want, we had a big budget deficit in fiscal 12. Fiscal 13 will be another deficit, and we certainly want to make sure that fiscal 14 is not the same base. And that's why I have to maybe have to really work at. But one of the problems is screwing up the numbers for the past years, and that's why we can't really give you numbers. I know Commissioner Stoll really wants them, and we're working on that. And I've been assured by the principal at the high school that we are going to be able to save the money, and I'm going to hold it to that, so. And I think the director of finance is really just working on getting the real true numbers that we know, when we put together a budget for fiscal, hopefully for fiscal 16, we'll really know what we spent in fiscal 15. You know, I'm not saying it's going to happen in fiscal 15. And I, the other thing that we definitely have impact on is sequestration, and I'm sure whether or not that's always going to be an impact on whether or not we end up with a deficit in fiscal of 14. We're working on making sure that that doesn't happen. Sorry about the real estate deal, we still, we have to look at that at least again. We will look at it in the next finance committee, and we will be putting together some parameters for how we're going to record out the fiscal 15 budget, how we want to talk about it at the next meeting, at the end of September.
Any other questions for, any questions for Keith? Ben?
Not a question, but a comment. I appreciate that you mentioned the sequestration, and I think that's a really important point that we should incorporate every time we talk about the budget, because that has such a horrific impact on what's going on here and is, whatever we end up coming up with for next year's budget, there's going to be a lot of questions, why aren't you cutting this, why are you spending that? When so much of it has to do with, you know, it's just becoming a word now. So I just think it's really important that we keep talking about what that impact, the real dollar effect is, has on a budget and therefore on the taxpayers that belong to them. I appreciate that.
I just want, due to federal sequestration, this represents a significant reduction of a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And the IDEAIA being funded, and we had fifty-seven thousand on the other, you know, so.
About two hundred fifty-seven, we covered all the two hundred by not making hires.
I was talking about how, the end up is that we have to find the other fifty-seven thousand. So, yeah, it's an issue for us. And, but we are, our number one priority, we'd say is diversity and equity. We have, we have a part-time coach, diversity coach for social studies in early primary grades. We funded this year. We funded eighty thousand dollars additional for training of our teachers. And we have a position that we just, that we just created in our budget. So we have, we are making a commitment financially and with our plan. So I think, I think people should be able to say to us, should be able to have confidence that we're sticking by our, by our, what we set as a primary goal in this district. I just have to say, I rode the bus today, and you talked about getting to learn about each other's cultures. The bus is a major place for the kids to interact. And I'm thinking, what, you know, what, they're learning a lot more there than maybe they're learning in some classrooms. That's all I can say.
Liz.
I just wanted to ask about whether we can all come to some meeting of the minds around talking about equitable outcomes for students. Because I think in the public's mind, when you talk about diversity and equity, it kind of lacks a full description of what our budget goal is. And diversity isn't a choice, we have diversity. So our goal is not diversity, we live with diversity every day. Equity is a goal, and I think there's a way to expand upon that in terms of speaking to the voters about equitable outcomes for all students. And that's something that requires the school as an institution to retool, and retooling costs money. And so if voters buy into equitable outcomes for all students, that's really different than saying you're paying for diversity and equity, because we're not paying for diversity. We're, we have diversity. So we're paying money to bring an equitable institution to life.
The money supports our, our goal. Money supports our strategic plan for diversity and equity and inclusion.
Yeah, I know, I was just asking, I think there's an opportunity to speak about it in a way that voters connect more.
Okay.
Great.
Okay. Anything else, or anything else for Keith? Lina, policy?
We haven't met, we met just prior to the board, and we're meeting afterwards, that sort of is that one.
Okay, infrastructure. Bernie?
I have two motions to bring to the board. First motion is to allow easement for Vermont Gas Systems along the property lines, to be the East Property Line, Cav School. And that's to, well, that's a motion, so.
Is there a second to that? Second by Keith?
There's an existing gas main coming off of William Street that skirts the southern part of the taxable property that has to be replaced. They would like to do it off of Pearl Street, along, close to the property line. And I think the main idea is it's just a short route, so. But we have to give them, allow them an easement. And originally, they wanted to go down through the middle of the parking lot, and we're suggesting they keep it tight to the property line. So it may impact any, any future use on the site.
Okay, I just will add that we made sure that as part of the lease negotiations, we've made one arm of UVM aware of what may be going on in the different areas. Any other questions or comment on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Can I pass?
Next motion is to approve the monthly parking agreement with Fletcher Allen Healthcare at Cav School.
Is there a second? Keith again?
We've had a month agreement for a number of years for parking in the amount of one thousand ninety-five dollars a month. And that just has to be renewed annually, so that's all presented.
Any other discussion of this?
Is that, is that an impact if you lease the space or...
If we lease a space, then we'll lose that, that income, yeah.
Okay, but UVM knows about...
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
That, that was mine.
Yeah. Yeah, until we actually hand over the property, that's, that's our use.
Any other questions? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And anything else?
I think for, let's say for the hour, because I had a fairly lengthy report to do. But it's, we are going to post these minutes as part of last meeting's agenda.
Right.
So I would encourage everybody to, to read the minutes. There's also some attachments, a letter from the architect who's working on the high school project with Amy. And also a list of suggested improvements for accessibility to high school from, from some staff members here, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Bernie? Seeing none, look to Rebecca for, I'm sorry, look to Patrick for the curriculum committee reports.
Minutes are posted. If you have questions, you can. Next, Tuesday, we'll be meeting, talking about the elementary Spanish program, the calendar 2.0, and Level One Technology.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Patrick? Rebecca, reporting diversity and equity. Okay, thank you.
So we did not have a forum, so we had a discussion about a couple of items. One was trainings that Nikki's involved in, and talked about formalizing systems for those trainings, and also put noted that it's a budget item. We've asked the staff to come forward with budget recommendations. There was a comment about some, but opportunities for budget savings in some HR functions that overlap, and so there may be an opportunity to streamline in the HR area. We touched on the stability policy, because it was an unusual process for, we have a policy dedicating here that it had to refer to policy. So we just have to be pointed back on the stability policy. And there was some discussion about the feeling that there are actually policies in place, but a lack of enforcement is creating the problems that we're trying to address by the stability policy. And so there was concern that there's culture that allows things to go on for too long, and that things may get to the grievance point, and there's no consequences. And so that goes back to training. And, you know, the need to have that training, the budget attached to that. So there was a specific suggestion to actually expand existing policies to include a standard of conduct. And we'll keep this item on the agenda. And there was a discussion about the equity report card data. I can just speak personally, I can request this data since I've been on the board and have not received it. And so there was a staff person there who indicated that the data wasn't forthcoming due to concerns about it being misconstrued, or passed on, or having some other kind of public conversation about it that may be a problem. I'm not, I'm not probably giving a fair assessment, but those were the concerns I heard from the staff person. So we are going to keep the data request on the agenda, as I understand it. So the next meeting will include, there was a GM chart attached to the equity report card and the ethical work plan, so we're going to talk about that specifically in relation to the budget regulations of this town. And then stability policy follow-up, data follow-up.
I guess I would also say on the data side, I think that, you know, one concern I had is that certain numbers might be so small that potentially individual people could be identified. But I think that really, you know, if we could move those out, I, I actually, you know, what, you know, keeping me abreast is also, I think, from the board's side, I think it's important that the information such as this in fact is put out. I think it, in fact, if it encourages other conversations, I think that's exactly what it should be doing.
I mean, that's the concern that hasn't been, you know, brought up, that I think there's a number of ways around that that are easily placed.
Okay, and so, you know, I would encourage that we keep. Any questions for perhaps the only person in the room that, that involves?
Kathy was there.
Anything else, then? I, we'll come back, Jill, I felt as if you had something that you, do you want to make a comment on that board report time? Was there something?
Yeah.
What was that? I guess I would do it now, because otherwise, the next thing would be enter into motion for an executive session.
I just wanted to, I sent an email today to all the school board commissioners, but I wanted to remind people that the regional Vermont School Word Association meeting is next Tuesday, the 17th, at 5:00 p.m. at Winuski High School. And there's a long list of people going, only one person, me, from the Burlington School District, so I just was trying to put another plug in to get some representation. It's a really good opportunity to hear, it's about some statewide issues this year, particularly about the healthcare reform, and it's also a great opportunity to meet other board commissioners in our county and...
I think with, like, an issue that's coming broader than, like, 2.0, calendar 2.0, it's also a good time for possibly being, yes. If everybody can hear that, is next Tuesday in Winuski, there's a meeting, regional meeting of the School Word Association. Are you still an officer?
Yes, but I'm stepping down.
Okay.
So also at that meeting, there will be nominations for vice president and president?
Yeah. At this point in the agenda, I would entertain a motion to enter executive session to discuss a personnel matter. So moved Kathy, seconded by Rebecca. All in favor of going into executives? Yes.
Help you with this motion, I would suggest that the, the motion includes going into executive session to discuss a document that in part would qualify for exemption, for entitlement for discussion in executive session, because it relates to materials that are exempt from the access to public documents law under 3V, 1VSA 317, subsections 1, 4, 7, and 11, as it relates to student records, potential discipline, records which are confidential by law or other designation. Also, under the so-called open meeting law, to go into executive session to discuss potentially the appointment... potentially the appointment, deployment or evaluation of a public officer or employee. The possibility of disciplinary action against a public officer or employee and consideration of records which are exempt, uh, from, uh, disclosure under the access to public documents law as well, as well as student records that are, um, prohibited from disclosure under federal law.
Now, I guess maybe I'm going to ask for some clarification here because I, my understanding is executive session, there are very specific items for which we can go into executive session. Um, the description I've heard here, um, is much more extensive than what I've understood we need to say when we go into an executive session, you know, whether it's real estate transaction, negotiations, or personnel matters.
It, the, the, what I, um, read.
And I guess I would ask, you know, what is the, you know, need for this at this point, you know, as clarification?
Yeah, it's just purely clarification. I wanted to make sure that you didn't, um, miss the full intent of the statute with regard to personnel actions, which under 312 is the appointment, employment and evaluation of a public officer.
Do you then have specific language? I mean, it was fairly long and extensive. Is there specific, you mean?
I was, I was quoting specifically from the statutes that I think are applicable.
Will you be able to give us that?
I guess what I would say is, do we need to have that exact language? Do you recommend that we have that exact language in the motion to go into executive session?
I recommend that you, uh, vote to go into executive session for the reasons that I just outlined and I'll provide it in the language.
Yeah, I think we need, we need that language if that's our rendition. Okay. Um, well, what I think is we need to be able to read this language. Do you have the language?
No, but I was going to say, I was going to make the motion that we go into executive session and that we use the language that Joe will provide.
That Joe will provide?
I think.
Or has provided. I mean, if you could, you know, take it verbatim, I mean, I think that, um, I guess what I would say is if you will say the, you know, the language that Joe will provide.
Right.
And then second, then I think we should have it reread and put into the minutes.
And captured, if he could go still with.
So, actually, who was the original, who made the original motion? I lost.
Kathy.
Kathy.
Okay.
Kathy is, I would actually ask you, Kathy, to remake the motion, then I guess. Okay, so as.
We go into executive session for the reasons Joe stated, which you will provide to us.
It is a new motion and the second came from Rebecca. Okay? So, Joe, do you get this?
Yes. Uh, to go into executive session for the, for the, for reasons authorized under 1VSA 313, namely, uh, to discuss records or documents accepted, uh, accepted from access to public records law under section 1VSA 317B, namely subsection 1, records which are designated, uh, as confidential by law or similar term, which are student records under federal law. 2, uh, records, uh, which is subsection 4, records which may pursuant to, um, uh, would cause the custodian to violate statutory common law privilege. Uh, this relates, well, I'll just, I'll just say it. Um, 7, uh, being personnel documents relating to an individual to, to hire, evaluate, promote, discipline. And 11, student records, including any records, um, student records. Uh, additionally, under 313, uh, the, the appointment, deployment or evaluation of public officers or employee and the potential discussion of disciplinary action against public officer or employee.
Joe, you will give us that language in writing?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
So that we can then, so that we can then make sure when we approve these minutes or when they're reviewed, that the language is correct. Unfortunately, that's not a, um, we're not in a position actually to, to, you know, to interact with the public at this point. Because there's a motion on the floor that's, the debate is on, uh, is in fact, executive session is not a debate, debatable, um, motion, but the motion's on the floor and the vote will come from the board.
Actually, in fairness, a motion going to executive session is debatable.
Is debatable, okay, sorry.
Because the board has to determine whether or not. So it's not a no.
I guess I would look to the board if there's any question. Seeing none, all in favor of going into executive session, uh, or all in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are in executive session. I guess we would.